You know, everybody.
This meeting of committee of the whole to order. Roll call, please.
Marx, here and Summeran.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Blair, Van Blaircom.
Here.
Ok.
Here.
Flannam.
Here.
Tanner.
Thank you. I'm working, losing my voice. I'm gonna talk as little as I can, if that's possible.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, item number five on the agenda.
Yep.
Is um Chief Dan would like to get that moved up on the agenda? Because they're on Zoom and they would like to do a.
Okay. Um.
That's okay.
We need a motion to move it.
I'll move that we move item five to item two.
Or.
Just push everyone down by one rather than not. I don't want Tracy to back in five. So you've been pretty patient back there.
Well, I think we have several people that are here that are also waiting.
Yeah.
So. Anyway.
You wanna wait?
I think we could move it to number four. I don't think it's fair to move it all the way to the top. There's other people that have been here and waiting very patiently as well. Thank you all for your patience.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll make a motion to move it to number five.
It is at five.
It is five.
Or to number four, pardon me, to number four.
Okay. Their second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to move item five to item four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Department head reports. Patty, can you start this? We do reports. I don't have to talk.
Hello, everybody. Um, I just would like to read my monthly report for November um and into October also. The airport, the state of Wisconsin Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics did an inspection of completed work done under the statewide pavement maintenance program at the Amory Municipal Airport. Uh, work done included crack ceiling, two-part crack repair, micro-surfacing and pavement marking. All work was complete and a final inspection occurred on November eighth at three thirty. There were no concerns with the work completed and no concerns were noted. Uh, revaluation will occur in the spring of two thousand twenty-four to review the um site surfaces. So that was all through grant funding that we got that work. Uh, we had a ribbon cutting ceremony for the car chargers. And that was on November first at Sulein Park and they were the four level two chargers. So um that was ta- that, like I said, it was at noon and we had XL Energy there, Amory Chevrolet. And the city of Amory were all present, as well as Amory Free Press and other bystanders. To date, there have been approximately more than a dozen users of the charging stations. I believe that once the word is out, more people will utilize the service. So that's a good thing. And um an application is required to be downloaded for use of the chargers. You can't just put a credit card in the machine. You have to have the app. So um that's how that works. And then the electronic sign is gaining more interest. Um, we're still asking for donations if you want your business recognized. So if you're a business and you want to be part of that, having your business recognized on there, um, please get ahold of us and we can talk about getting your logo. Um, council chambers camera system, we were having some issues with some of the camera devices in the council chambers. Um, there were also issues with the PC associated with its use. Uh, we called an Abcom who did all the installation of that to troubleshoot and connecting point as well. So if you see a faulty recording from our last meeting, that is most likely the cause. Um, housing development and hotel development, I know this was a hot talk topic during our budget, but we're gaining some interest on that. I have had promising talks with local builders and with developers. And there right now currently is a few houses going up. And there is also interest in starting housing next summer with a big developer and he's going to maybe do duplexes, fourplexes and some housing. And he's a very repri- reputable builder, so um I'm excited about that. We'll get Sundance lots filled with with housing, so um. As well as that, we had a hotel feasibility study done. And we should hear something very soon from them. I'm guessing probably by next week, we should have that information, which will help um with the progress of looking at hotel possibilities in the city of Amory. Um, fire department billings for the city, just so you know, the townships who utilize our services for the fire department, um, the two thousand twenty-two allocation for those costs has been determined for the town of Lincoln, town of Blackbrook and the town of Alden. They should be receiving final billings for use of our fire department here in the city. So look for those in your mailboxes. And I updating the financial policies for the city of Amory. I wanted to make sure we have current up-to-date policies moving forward. I know we have them in the in the ordinances and that type of thing, but I want the actual policies updated. And that really goes well with our new auditor, kind of satisfies their requirements. Um, and I'm also working with human resources to make sure the personnel handbook and policies are current and up to be up to date as well. So um, you should all be seeing that handbook as well as a policy. It's up for approval in the near future, so. And upcoming events, um, we're all closed for Thanksgiving, the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth. And December sixth, I'd like to ask you folks, since we are having um a special council that meeting, let's talk about maybe just having a special council meeting, since there's not a lot going on with Committee of the Whole. And just do that on the sixth, but I'll kind of talk with all of you about that and then we can make sure that the public knows that too. So that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Okay, I know Ben's not here. So we could move on to Chief Dan, please. And get your first one out of the way.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, super helpful. Thank you.
Well, as you know, it's been a busy couple of weeks at the department. Um. One of the things that we've been working on and we're glad that we are finally getting caught up on, there was several cases that were sitting on the docket that hadn't been dealt with that we have gotten through. The one that was the longest out was almost over a year that had been sitting not finished. Um, thanks to um Officer Hoakes, with him being sick, he was able to come in and work on that and get that finalized for us. So that was a big uh accomplishment by him, get that done. Uh, there were several other reports that got finished up. Um, some of the stuff that we've been working on and I've been spending a lot of time on is the Axon project. Um, along with um. We know that our policies and procedures need to be updated, so I have been in contact with Lexipol. Um, and I'm waiting to get some type of pricing from them to do that for us. They are kind of the the standard and the leading company that's doing that for almost, you can click on their website and you can go to all the different states that they do it for, and I believe they are just about in all fifty states that they're doing the policies and procedures. Um, and we can talk about that once I get that proposal from them. Um. Um, the other, the front sheet that I gave you is showing what um secretaries have been doing for the DMV report. Um, they, and I know this month, for whatever reason, it's been constant. So I think the number for this month is even gonna be higher than October, and October was pretty good. Um, so that's gonna be even higher. Um. The guys are kind of getting to know me a little bit better and figure out how I'm gonna do stuff. Um. I know there's been kind of some concerns with the lack of citations being issued, but you also have to understand that we had to release another officer on my second day of work here. Um, I won't go into details of why that happened. Um, so we got Jim Presley in. He's been great. Uh, so we're technically running with three patrol guys and me right now. So we're still technically three guys down because Paul has been out on medical leave. So um, so we're really short-staffed. I already talked with the rest of the team and that we understand that we're getting through the stuff that we had to get through and now we're back to doing regular patrol stuff. Um. We have been doing, well, Jim Presley's been great at night. He's been doing door checks. He's found several businesses that have been doors open. Thank goodness, nothing's been taken or stolen that we know of as of yet. But that is being found throughout town. Um, the winter parking, we have been doing um mostly warnings right now. I told the guys we're gonna hold off on any tickets until we do get a significant snowfall. Um, I hope people understand that we're being generous right now where we could be ticketing, but um I also think that without the the snow that we're not gonna push it real heavy right now, so. Um. Uh, the two thousand twenty Dodge pickup truck that was gonna cost me nineteen hundred dollars for a new radiator and all kinds of work um to Bernard's, luckily enough, um peppers up in Balsam Lake took a look at it and it ended up costing me a hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So significant savings there. Uh, the seventeen um had an issue with a leak. Um, but the new motor was leaking oil. Um, they found out that the brand-new motor that they gave us had a faulty oil pan gasket and we did get that repaired under warranty, so that's taken care of. The brand-new squad car has to go back to EATI tomorrow because when whoever ordered the parts for that vehicle, the docking station that they ordered was for, for whatever reason, was for old computers that we don't even use anymore. So our new computers don't dock in it, so we're taking it back. They're giving us a temporary replacement until the new one can come in, and they said that they will more than likely just swap it out, that they're not gonna charge us for the docking station that we ordered, even though it was wrong, because we we can't use it. So that squad car has not really been out on the road much because we can't even dock our cameras in or our computer into it. Um. I think that's about all I got right now. We got a lot of stuff going on, but we're getting.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Chief Frohland, please.
Uh. So far, the Truck Committee on November eighth has met with E1. Um, and this past Monday, we took a tour of Rosenbauer. And we're starting to spec out for a new ladder truck. Um, the one we have now is nineteen ninety-three and it's seen his day. Um, and like I said last time with the ISO audit and everything that we had, we do need another ladder truck just for the buildings that we do have in town. Um. Uh, and Pierce said that they would be getting us a drawing for our spec truck at the end of this week, so I'm expecting it here shortly. Um, we've also um als- also asked Pierce if they could bring a truck back here, so guys wanted to come out and see it and all that kind of good stuff and uh and and then they will eventually, hopefully the snow holds off and they can come and we'll be all white and, but anyway, um, so they pretty much told us the longer we wait to get the truck ordered, the more expensive it's gonna be because the engines are changing, you know, interest rates and all that kind of stuff. Um, but it's still gonna take two to four years by the time we place to order to get the truck. So it's it's a while, so. So that's about it on the ladder truck. Um, we have been actually been, well, I've been really slow because all the fire department's been busy because they've had to call and I've been at work. So even Mitchell just want, doesn't want me to go anywhere anymore. He's tired of doing the NFR report, so all that kind of good stuff. Um, another thing that happened is Ed White was awarded a grant for AEDs. Um, it was a sixty-five hundred dollar grant. Um, they thought maybe they can get three to four AEDs and put them in businesses throughout the town. Well, turned out that the AEDs were on sale and we actually ended up getting six of them. So pretty good deal. So I'd like to thank Ed for getting that that grant and uh, we haven't decided exactly where they're gonna go, what businesses they're gonna be in. But they're gonna be done throughout the, throughout the city of Amory. I mean, six AEDs is 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 pretty good. Um, and the last thing I have is to let everybody know that on December second, that the fire department's having their chili feed and serving from four to seven. There will also be some raffles. So bring your appetites in your wallets.
Always good.
Any questions? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Heather.
Hello, everyone. So October was a really busy month for the library and for myself. I attended a two-day director boot camp in Marshfield. It was put on by the Wisconsin DPI. And it was really informative. It was really fun. It was where a lot of new directors got together and just talked shop for hours with people from DPI who know the answers to all of our really technical questions. So that was a lot of fun. I also was able to go to the annual Wisconsin Library Association Conference in Middleton. And that was four days of really great workshops. Uh, some of the classes that I took were improving your marketing with reels, um, how to bring people together with passive programming, trends in the annual report, material pickup lockers, high-impact onboarding, and how to add literacy materials outside of the public library building. Since we last met, we've had five adult programs, four all-ages programs, one teen-only program and four children's programs with an attendance of a hundred and thirty-eight people. Plus, we had the big Halloween event where we gave away three hundred and eighty-eight books to children. And we had about seven hundred people coming through the doors. So that was great. That was really rewarding. Um, other great news is I'm excited to announce that our youth services librarian, Emma Novak, was selected to participate in the two thousand twenty-four PBS Kids Learning Cohort. So we are one of six libraries in the entire state of Wisconsin that was chosen. So that's kind of a big deal. We're really proud of Emma. And what she'll do is learn about high-quality, ready-to-use educational materials that PBS Kids puts together. And then she's gonna learn how to put those resources into practice at the library. She'll receive training in media literacy skills, integrating digital media resources into hands-on programming and building family engagement connections. So uh, our hope is that the training and resources provided through this program will enhance our family programs in the community and strengthen our relationships with the families in the community. Um, a little update, at last month's library board meeting, we approved a procedure for the administration of Narcan in case of emergency. So next Wednesday at two PM, anybody that wants to come, city councils, city hall, um, city staff can come to the library. Two PM, Polk County Health is going to give us an instructional demonstration on it. We already have Narcan, but they will also provide us with Narcan for free once we've taken their instruction. Um, and then Chuck is gonna do some fire safety for us and then we'll have a staff meeting. So uh, we're kind of excited about that. Hopefully, we never need to use it, but I want us to all know how to if it comes up. Um, and then finally, I'm really happy to report that the author visit collaboration between the school district, the library, and the friends of the library was a huge success. Um, students and parents had lots of good things to say on social media about the visit. And um, I just wanted to share a really great story, which is kind of why we do what we do. We had a young girl come into the library this week with a grandparent. And they said, we've never been to the library before. Where's the hold shelf? And then we helped them. The girl found her hold shelf, her, found her book. And she came up to the desk and she said, I saw this author at school and I wanted to read one of their books. So that brought someone into the library, exposed a kid to an author, a book, more materials. Hopefully, they'll become users of the library in the future, but it was really exciting, so. Thanks to everyone who helped support this really big event.
Thank you.
Questions for me? Nope.
No, thank you, Heather.
Yeah, thank you.
Jeff Mahoney.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Well, the crew's been out getting all the parks shut down, got all the water lines blown out, cemeteries, parks, campground, all that's done. The dump is closed for the winter. But if you have leaves or anything you need to get rid of, you can call City Hall or the shop and do get ahold of us and we'll open it up for you. Weather stays the way it is, for sure. Uh, but out sweeping streets, we're picking up leaves, of course, all over the place. Uh, there's been a lot of maintenance going on, getting ready for the winter, all the equipment's ready, all the enough salt, sand, enough to get started. Spent a lot of time with budget and getting the numbers for the slides and keeping everybody happy, or. Uh. Playground equipment is all, you know, torn apart and doesn't look good, as everybody knows, but we'll get that all fixed up before the spring comes. Uh, Christmas lights are going up. If you haven't noticed, we've got the poles in for the trees. We'll pick up the trees tomorrow. We're gonna put those in tomorrow. We'll have all the Christmas stuff tied up while the weather's nice, too. And besides that, we've been doing some jetting, a couple sewers have had problems with and day-to-day stuff. Any questions?
Did you, did the guy get back to you with costs on uh handicap?
Yep, I've got a bunch of different little items and gonna pick out and see what they want and yeah, I've got it's whatever, you know, it all goes from thirty thousand down to two thousand, you know, it all depends on what you want.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
And Taylor.
All right, with the end of the year approaching, the two thousand twenty-four election cycle, we here in no time. I've been working to make sure that I have all of my training completed so that I'm certified for next year. And I've been looking at getting the paperwork ready so candidates can start to circulate their papers. I believe it's December first. So I'm working on making sure those packets are ready and then people can pick them up and get them circulated. I think they're due back January second. Um, I've also been working on preparing the special assessments for the tax roll. We have a few houses that have special assessments on them still, but the bigger thing is the delinquent utilities, anything that was due before October first, if it isn't paid as of tomorrow morning. Um, today officially, but tomorrow morning, that will go on the tax roll. And my list is at least half of what it was when the initial notices went out, so we've really whittled that down and it's nice to see. I've also been busy collecting the current utility payments. If you didn't know, they were due today. So if you don't want a late fee, make sure you get those in um as soon as possible. The late fees will probably go on either tomorrow or next Monday, so it'll be in no time that they'll go on. And then today I met with the recycling committee. They're still working on their education plan and how to educate the community on recycling. Unfortunately, there was a grant that they wanted to apply for and it opened and closed in no time, basically. Before we knew it was open, it was closing. And then um with the car charger ribbon cutting, that happened on November first. I spent quite a bit of time working with XL, making sure that those chargers were up and running and then talking to Flo, who is the actual charger company, to make sure that our backend is set up um with our portal, so we can actually log in and see usage reports and some really good usage reports. So how long people are charging for and what they're paying and all that stuff. Set up all the pricing and so we are set with those and good to go. We're out on PlugShare and people should know we're there. And XL was nice enough to put some comments out there and stuff and help out with all that and make sure they were up and running. And then with the personal property taxes that are going to be going away um with Act twelve, I actually put together a spreadsheet that got submitted to the state of Wisconsin to remove the personal property taxes out of the TIF districts. So those were included as part of that and with them going away, we were gonna lose that funding, so it's actually bringing down our districts and pretending that wasn't there, basically. And then um the latest notification I've seen from the state is that mobile homes and like airport hangars, the structures, they're still going to be taxed in some way, so it's not that we're going to be losing that revenue as a whole. Um, it's just like the actual business assets, part of personal property taxes that it looks like is going away based off of the last email I got, so. Any questions?
Ooh.
All right.
Is that EV money go to a separate account? Does it come to the city or?
It comes to us. They collect a fee off of the top of it for us using their service and stuff like that. I can't think off the top of my head what it was. And then the rest, I believe, is supposed to go directly into our bank account.
And then do we get a, uh, is there a meter on those? So we get, we get an electric bill?
A separate XL bill that comes, a separate line item for those. And we'll be able to track the income versus the outgoing expense of the actual electric. Did you have a second question? Or did you ask me to?
No, I'll ask you whatever. That that was when I was completely interested in.
All right, everybody good?
Oh, and the other, the other question was, um, so what's the dollar value of the personal property tax that we are going to lose?
I quite honestly do not know that off the top of my head. I haven't looked at it specifically um off of the tax roll, so.
And so that's going to be a, that's going to be a ongoing cost for next year that, or that we won't collect. That, but that doesn't start till twenty twenty-four, right?
Well, and the state is giving us some money, so there's, it's quite honestly, there's still a lot of things that seem like they're not fully exactly how it's gonna go, but we are supposed to be getting some money back from certain things that would, I think, cover some of that.
But the personal property tax for twenty, that'll be paid January one twenty-four is, that's still getting paid, yes, that's still getting paid, so we're okay.
Yes.
This year, it'll be next year that any impact is.
Yes, and I know the state is freezing some of the, like, they're using numbers from one year again the next year to account for giving time to figure all this stuff out. So they've put a lot of thought into the backside of it. It's just learning all the new rules.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Item two, public access funds discussion. Hello, Tracy.
So just so you know, I wasn't standing in the back because I was being impatient. It just was more comfortable to stand than sit. And Ben promised me the budget part would take five minutes. Thank you, Ben. Uh, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Tracy Hendrickson. Um, I am the Director of Community Education and Communications at the School District. And as part of um school communications, I oversee the recording and the live streaming of all school events. And in the past few years, especially since COVID, I have also been asked to coordinate the video recording of a, of a number of events that are a combination of school, community, um, and primarily community events such as um the Miss Amory Talent Show, the Miss Amory Coronation, the Memorial Day Ceremony, the Veterans Day Ceremony, the Fall Festival Parade. Um, some of these I've been able to help with, some of these I have not. And when I say I help, um, I mean coordinating someone to do it, potentially providing equipment and some of it doing myself, just volunteering my time so that they can get it recorded. So I hope when I can, I think it's important to record these community events, share them on cable TV as well as other platforms such as YouTube, so that those who cannot attend in person um can still have that viewing experience. Just last week, we fielded a handful of phone calls and emails from people who were wondering uh where they were gonna be able to find that Veterans Day recording because they couldn't get to the gym on Friday morning. So it's important. During the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we recorded and sent to cable TV over seventy events. Um, obviously, lots of those are school-related, athletic, music, things like that. Um, but lots of primary uh community events. So I'm here tonight because I have been told um that there's a longstanding state-issued franchise agreement between the city of Amory and Northwest Communications um slash Amory Cable TV. Um, so everyone in the city of Amory who purchases cable TV is charged a three percent fee that is paid to the city of Amory each year. So last year, it was about eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. Ben Jansen did some digging for me and found that the city does receive between ten or has been receiving between ten thousand and twelve thousand dollars a year from Northwest Communications, and it's part of that agreement. Um, I've also talked to Scott Jensen from Northwest Communications and with Larry Stelter, who many of you know as our longtime community of Amory recording expert. So my understanding is that the initial, or one of the initial purposes, anyway, of this agreement is for local public access and that this is maybe how people like Larry Stelter, um, I think of Bill Hay were potentially paid for their time recording if they were paid, I don't know, um, announcing community and school events, maybe they volunteered their time. Um announcing community and school events, maybe they volunteered their time. Um and assuming the money's also been used over time to purchase video and audio equipment that was once used and maybe still available. And we all know that over the years Larry himself has recorded hundreds of community events and I'm not sure of Larry's current plan. But I don't think that he regularly schedules recordings like he once did for the community. And as a result, we're we move, I am getting the phone calls. Like, can you record this? Can you record this? Can we put it out there? All good stuff. So the school has made an investment in recording and live streaming, will continue to do so. But I also need to rely heavily on volunteers' use of their equipment, whether it was being Bob Johnson, who many of you know as well. Um but the reality is that volunteers like Bob Johnson won't be willing to do this forever. Um along with losing Bob's services at some point, we also lose the use of his equipment. And the reality is that recording, live streaming, posting on YouTube, sharing on cable TV is not going away anytime soon. It's kind of become an expectation. And if we're gonna meet those community expectations. I feel like I'm kind of at a point where as I'm thinking down the road, like we need some help. And when I was told that. When I went looking for help and was told, well, the city already gets this money. That's why I'm here to say, I don't know if you even know where that money is. So if there are funds intended. For this purpose through the agreement between Amory Cable TV and the City of Amory. I'm hoping that we can kind of start the discussion. Can any of those funds be utilized? As we kind of do this as a partnership. So I'm here tonight to hopefully get the ball rolling. Begin the discussion about how the school and the city can work together to meet these community expectations. I'm not looking for money to pay me. Um I'm looking for money that maybe would potentially pay others. When we do a lot of this recording at school, we have students who help. Somebody has to operate that camera. They need to be trained and can't expect them just to do everything for free. So we do pay, I work through um We Are Amory, which is um kind of our live streaming partner. Um but maybe paying others, paying students so that we can make plans to cover these events, money to purchase, update video and recording equipment. In partnership with the school, we are doing some of that, but it takes a lot. And if if and when we lose Bob. That's a huge loss. Um so current video recording expenses are covered through the school budget, through the We Are Network. But as we move forward and I ask to do more and more. Um I would like help meeting those expectations, demands, to continue doing what we're doing, keep up with technology, continue improving our process and product. It's a lot of work. Um and since I think that funds have been provided for this purpose, I'd like to see a discussion and partnership so that we can make those things happen. So next time the VFW, the American Legion, the Fall Festival Committee reaches out and says. Can you record our event? Um hopefully I can say, yeah, I have resources to help make that happen. Um rather than thinking, I do all this for the school, I I don't know how I'm also supposed to provide for these other things. Um so I don't know what those resources would look like. But I think it's time to explore those options and how those funds can be used. Um I realize you maybe don't even know about this agreement. I have no idea. I don't know how old it is. Maybe you've never heard of these funds. I don't know where these funds go, but and we can't answer all those questions tonight. But I wanna kind of open this up and say, can we move forward here so that we have a plan and. I don't know what that would be, but. That's why I'm here.
And I I can speak to some of that. It's we have, they're called cable franchise fees that we have in our budget currently right now and we did pay Larry. Before we moved into our new space, so I can see that that's possibly a good use for those funds. So.
We bought, we bought a fair batch of equipment that Larry recommended when he when he used to uh. Tape the council proceedings. And then they were taken right over and put on cable TV. Now with the internet happening, that's uh less important than it used to be. But uh we don't, you know, we average, like you said, between ten and twelve thousand dollars, but. There's. I don't know if that's a local fee or if that's a state. Thing that you that's uh. Put under, I. I do know that. Every. Attempt to make any real sense about where, how it gets there and and what it gets there has been pretty much just. You know, um but the money, you know, we still get some money. There's no question about that. And I I think that's a good use for it, cuz.
Yeah, to to me, the biggest problem is, or not problem, the biggest challenge is how do we start? You know, we don't, we don't have any of that. Expert expertise. What I will tell you, though. Is that if food options are available, Bob Johnson will show up. I'm just. So you know that, so. But.
Feed them at concerts. We're gonna lose them, I know.
Consider having something, um but. Um how can we? Partner. With the school district and something else. I don't know what that would be and I don't know how we could do it, but.
And I don't have a specific. So, yep, and I think the thing is, you know, some of these community events, our school community overlap. Um and, you know, we kind of tap out on purchasing equipment and and coordinating things. It just would be nice to know if we had some additional funds coming from somewhere else just to help make it happen. Um you know, could it be totally separate? Could I say, no, you have funds. You take care of this stuff. I'm taking care of the school. But it makes sense to do it together. So I just wanna know why there's some additional resources to help us. Video equipment's expensive. I mean, you guys are beautifully set up in here, but every time we go somewhere, we need stuff that you need to pick up, pack up, take out. Set it all up, audio, video, and I know a lot of people think, well, can't you just use an iPad or your phone? Well, yeah, but not if you want it to be a nice recording, so.
Yeah. That's not with, not the way they advertise their iPads or phones.
Is there a way, Tracy, that you and I could just sit down and meet and kind of talk about what? What you're looking at and what you do and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'd love to see, you know, some ideas about. How do we not just support that, but how do we? How do we get involved with it? Because I think that if we're not involved with it, we don't. Have ownership. And I think that as a city, we wanna have. And it kind of goes with what April's talking about too, with the the marketing and making ourselves more visible. In positive ways, this would be another way to move that forward, so.
Well, and I I I agree with that and I do think that the um. Telephone company can be involved in that conversation as well because they obviously dictate what's played and when it's played. So they are the third big partner in that, so I think the three.
Yeah, that I think we should all meet.
Yeah, I mean. They hold a big, a big piece of that. I don't, I don't know.
If you would do that and help us, you know, at least get started.
Play whatever I send them.
Yeah, they need content. You're right.
I don't know what they'd do without us right now, sending them everything. Yes. So let's, let's coordinate something. Emails and, okay, okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. To be determined. I think we can do some, something good here.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, number three, Arts Parks. Recreation.
Evening. So I was in contact with David Marksen. He was the original painter of the murals on on the side of Apple River TV. The logging camp and the farmstead. As we know, the one is in major repair needed. And he came and looked at it and he gave an estimate of thirty five hundred to five thousand dollars roughly. On the high end to fix it. He just fixed one in the same condition roughly in River Falls. He used a new primer that will. Stick to the block. Help peel it or stick to the peeled paint, but he will. Go and restore it, get all the loose. Paint off. And restore it to its original state. For anywhere between thirty five hundred and five thousand dollars. I guess my question is, is do we have any money available to start this project? Get the ball rolling. I know I do need to get a formal bid and I am working on that. That is my.
Yeah, this, it doesn't sound like something we would be doing.
It would be next summer. It would be a next summer project, but I guess what I'm asking too is, is there any money left? A where in the twenty three budget that we could possibly use to pay for that?
I don't think there is. Um I I think a bigger question, Tom, is. And I don't, I don't have my finger on the pulse of the community on this, but. Are they really worth doing that to? You know, we got two of them. Uh both of them are in bad shape. They're both on private buildings.
With that, the one on the private building, I believe, has to come down on Ruby Maze.
Is pardon?
The one on on Ruby Maze on Main Street, that has to come down, I believe, cuz it's a safety concern.
Yeah.
Sent letters to them.
And it and it, to me, as we're working at it, cuz I saw it on the agenda. We certainly have calmed the traffic, you know, with what we've done the last couple of years and going through Amory, but I I. I think it's just something to consider when whether we do that again or not, is do you want to divert? Driver's attentions to the sign when they're going southbound Amory. Uh you know, originally Harvey got, we talked to the guy and I think he donated that or the stuff originally. Yeah, wow, it's been done. It's been upgraded at least once since it was done originally. That I know, but um. I don't, you know, that's not an exorbitant amount of money for the amount of work that 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 goes on. I just, I don't.
Can you, can you get?
Yeah.
A good bid and.
I'm working on that.
And we can kind of talk about it and have a chance to think about it too.
Dave is in a play in River Falls, so his nights are kind of. He was supposed to give me a bid and.
Yeah, well, it's not. We're not gonna rush it. I mean, we don't have to rush it. You have time to to talk it through and figure out what it's gonna take and. I'm I'm glad that you said he's could do a.
What the Dan Building?
Yeah, that's another one.
That was, what that was our. Our thought was to restore this because it is heritage. Logging was a heritage in its own and so was farming. And I mean, it was painted there twenty years, restore it. And then possibly when that's done, have him look at other. Spots or also ask different bids from Tom or Paul Omen. Other artists, local. I mean, they have a lot of ties to the stone, so.
Yeah, and I guess I'll. It potentially. Throw a wrench in things, but I I know, I know that the Arts and Parks Committee has done. A good job of looking for what things that need to be taken care of. We're, we're looking, the city needs to have a long range plan of what we need to be doing. Can we look at something like that over the, you know? The next two to three years, what kinds of things need to be addressed so that we, we have that on our radar? Not just, well, this is broken, this is broken, this is broken. Not prioritized, but. Things that you can see that that in our. You know, short term and little longer term future that. We could be doing or planning for. That's our biggest problem here is we can't. We haven't had the the the. We'd look forward to plan. So if if that would. You could help us. Okay. Thank you, Tom. Okay. Dan, the Exxon contract. Finally. This isn't the longest one yet, but. We're working on it.
I'll just talk briefly and then we'll get Cynthia on.
Got her, uh also her senior director along with her in case there's some questions.
We'll just say thank you Cynthia for putting up with the wait delay. Thank you Cynthia.
Thank you for letting me join and um actually uh our senior director is in the waiting room. Would you be able to let her in? Thank you so much. Sorry, Chief, go ahead.
All right, so this is a project that I kind of got thrown into when I walked in the door. Being told that we had three contracts that were coming up due at different times. And um the other problem we had is that we need one more fleet camera. We could use two, but we'll, we'll do one um for the new squad car that we got and. What my understanding was is if we put a new fleet camera in the new squad, the other ones are gonna be behind in technology, the new. And I'm gonna let Cynthia talk about the new fleet cameras. But the other problem we had is if we did. If we discuss this now, next year we're gonna be back talking about the body cameras. The following year, we're gonna be back talking about the tasers. So. We came up with a plan to put everything all together. Into a package deal, get everything on the same contract. At the same time, and that every year we know how much money we have to budget to keep this program going. Because this is the technology we have to have. Um the body cams are definitely through the federal government. We have to have the body cams. Um so I'm gonna let Cynthia take over with her presentation of uh this information. But if you guys got questions, go ahead and ask her. She's got a lot more knowledge about this stuff than I do, so I'll let it go to Cynthia.
Thanks so much, Chief, and I'll quickly share my screen. Uh would you be able to? Uh enable me to to share that?
You should be able to now.
All right, perfect. Are you able to see this, okay? Yes. Okay, perfect. Um so thank you so much again for uh for letting us join. Uh as Chief mentioned, my name is Cynthia. Uh so I'm kind of Amory's primary uh point of contact here at Axon. We've been working really closely on this project together. Uh with Chief Heather and really the the whole crew over at uh Amory PD and so very excited and just thank you again for letting me join. Uh as mentioned, we do have uh our senior director here on the call as well, Lauren. Uh so we're gonna make sure. We open it up for any and all questions. Kind of towards the the tail end of this after I kind of give you a brief overview of everything. Uh but really, primary goal is we just wanna make sure that you guys feel absolutely comfortable and confident in the program moving forward.
Can I stop you just for a second? Is there a way to turn up? Can we turn up the volume? They're having a hard time hearing what Cynthia's telling them. All right.
Check one, two, three.
That better?
Okay, um awesome. I mean, just overall primary goal is we wanna make sure that you guys feel really comfortable and confident. In the program that you have for the police department moving forward, uh as well as like the true partners that you really, really are to us, so. Yeah, so we'll, we'll make sure we open it up for questions at the end here, but so kind of just as a little bit of background. Uh as Chief alluded to in his, his opening report, uh then as well as a little bit when he was just describing uh the project overall, right? A few um of the biggest challenges right now facing agencies is limited resources, right? I'm sure we can all relate to that, wanting or needing to do more with less. Right? And then as well as at the same time, there's this exponential growth in overall digital evidence. As well as the need for transparency and accountability um in the community. And so we really built out this program with these things in mind. Uh especially as we're looking at the ten year program as well that you have in front of you. Really, the backbone of this is what we call the Technology Assurance Plan. And so it's really going to ensure that your PD has the latest and greatest technology for their time with Axon. So to briefly explain this a little bit more, on the body camera side of things, especially as we look at technology, right? Every thirty months. But uh agency is gonna send us their body cameras back. We're gonna send them completely new ones of the latest and greatest model, right? So for instance, they had this on their existing contract, on their existing contract, they had the body threes. However, they would do their refresh and so now they have net new body fours. Uh and so this program will continue into this new ten year program, uh as well as the same thing is gonna be true on the fleet side of things. Um so every sixty months of the agreement. We are going to give them the latest and greatest fleet system, right? So let's say right now we're on the fleet three system. Let's say we come up with fleet four. They get to opt into that for no additional charge. With this great power also comes great responsibility. And yes, I know that's a quote from Spider-Man, uh but as Chief and Heather know, right? Like, I like to keep it a little bit more uh friendly and uh and and playful as we, you know, work through more of these difficult projects. Um and so really, at a high level. The Axon ecosystem, Axon Evidence for Amory PD is built on C G S compliance. And so this is really going to provide a clear chain of custody with forensic fingerprints. Uh tamper proof audit trails and deletion protections, ensuring that transparency and accountability for the community. So that you can really make evidence.com the sole source of truth for all of the PD's digital evidence management. One example of this is, for instance, the community request feature. So this is going to allow the police department to send those personalized C G S compliant links to members of the community. To collect their digital evidence instead of having to have them come back to the station or send them over email, which. As we know, security wise, isn't always the top notch. Um and so that's going to bring it on to the C G S compliant um field. Um, and so that's going to bring it on to the C G I S compliant, um, field.
And what you mean by that, that community link? Is like, let's say you got a ring doorbell or you got a security system on your house. We directly from our phones can send you a link that you can drag and drop that data or those videos. And send them directly to us and they go into the secured evidence.com that we use. They're already labeled and. For our viewing. So we don't have to try to regenerate these cameras to get to the right. Uh, system in order to play them this well, we'll play them when we get them. So it's, it's a very valuable tool that way.
Correct, yeah, couldn't, couldn't explain it any better. See Chief, I don't know what you're talking about. You do a phenomenal job at explaining this. But then, so once you have all this evidence in evidence.com. Uh, you're also gonna be able to easily share it with the community as well as, uh, some of the, the partner agencies surrounding you guys, right? So Polk County District Attorney, the Sheriff's Office, Medical Examiner, uh, as well as some other similar, uh, similar sized small agencies close by. Right? So St. Croix Falls, Clear Lake, Luck Police Department, they're actually just making the transition, uh, first thing in the new year to, to evidence.com. The other kind of quick important thing that I did want to call out, especially as we're looking to the future of like a ten year program. It's also important that to note that Axon is going to be ever evolving with you, listening to you and implementing your feedback. Continuously grow and improve our offerings for you, right? And so a prime example of this is on average. We reinvest anywhere between a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty million dollars per year. Um, back into research and development. In, in last year, Q four alone. This was actually sixty nine million reinvested back into research and development. So another big part of this, um, is also our partnerships, integrations and acquisitions with other market leaders. Uh, in the law enforcement space, right? And so we can kind of see a, a quick glimpse of, of all of them here. Um, but one in particular that we wanted to highlight, um, was our integration with Flock. Um, which the agency is, is also, um, working on, on moving towards like, uh, neighboring agencies as well. And so this is gonna really allow you to maximize the efficiencies between both the fixed ALPR systems, so the Flock systems. Uh, as well as the mobile automatic license plate reading systems included with the fleet three system and package that you have in front of you. Our acquisitions also in, uh, for instance, input ace and mine ninety are also continuing to build out, right? Like this full circle, one stop shop for a law enforcement platform, right? So you can really be comfortable and confident, uh, that Axon is not only going to be your body camera vendor. For the next ten years, but that we're also going to be your partner as equally invested and committed to your police department's success. As you are. And that's kind of like very, very high level brief overview. Of the program, the Axon ecosystem, where we continue to see the, the, the vision. Um, of the partnership going in the future. And so we just want to kind of pass it over to you guys, any. Any questions, um, regarding that or the programs that, that you have included in the packet?
Cynthia, do you have that, uh, printout that we talked about? Of, um, the cost for this year versus if we wait?
Yeah, uh, so this one right here.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe this is also the, the third or fourth, um, slide in the packet that, that she provided for you. So as a publicly traded company, um, every January first, we do get a new price book. And so that is what you are seeing here in front of you, um, today, as we labeled it, the, the cost of waiting. Um, in working on this project with the department as well. Um, timelines are, are very, very important, especially in regard to the TASER portion of this project. So for instance, the, the lead times on the TASER tens right now is about a hundred and twenty days. Um, so for instance, a approval and authorization to move ahead by, uh, eleven twenty-two would be putting. Uh, the shipment at about February, uh, fifteenth of the new year. Uh, and with that, um, going back and forth with our finance team. I was also able to get the, uh, additional negotiated buyback and, uh, additional discounts. Um, approved through them. However, the way that those work is they. Tie those to an expiration date and that expiration date is the twenty second of this month. Um, so. Just kind of wanted to, to call that out again.
So the reason we want to do a ten year instead of a five year, as you can already see just for the difference between the pricing for this year. I think for next year, which is going up at a considerable amount. Is that five years from now, how much more is that gonna cost us? So with the ten year program, we're guaranteed this pricing all the way through. Cameras get replaced at untimely manner, so we don't have to worry about them failing. Even the squad cams get replaced. Um, the TASER tens, which we would go to, which is an upgrade compared to these, which. Videos I seen are very, very impressive and way better than even what these are, and these even do better. Than the X twos that we had in St. Croix Falls, so. The only changes is that come year five of the, the TASER ten. We won't get the latest and greatest version, but we would get new versions of the TASER tens. So they are still gonna be replacing them at the five year or technically the sixth year, they would be replaced with new. Equipment, just that it'd be the same model that we currently would have. Instead of getting the latest and greatest, but that option is out there. To pay an additional cost if you wanted to change miles. Is that correct Cynthia?
Correct, yep. At any point, uh, we can always one add on to the agreement, uh, or rewrite it as well. So essentially if, let's say for instance, um, there was something we wanted to either. Uh, remove or add, we could easily work up a rewrite or add on to the contract.
And then another thing that we did when we first looked at all the pricing that they gave us, there were several options that we opted out of. Cause I didn't feel that it was necessary to have. Um, even with the, the amount of data that we are technically purchasing. Um, we didn't go with the unlimited, we stayed at the two thousand, uh, gigabytes. Because we found out that our system, the guys weren't categorizing their video cam, the videos. And when you don't categorize the videos, they stay in limbo, which is taking up data space. So we didn't have a true accurate reading on how much data we were u- using. But now that I got the guys all understand that they gotta label these videos. Um, cause after a certain period of time, videos that we don't need automatically get deleted. And they're not taking up space, but if they're not labeled, they just sit there taking up space. So, um, another thing we did not choose to do was the automatic, uh, uh, transcription of the videos. Cause I didn't want to pay for a price of a, a service that we may only use maybe once, twice, three times in. Five or ten years, so, um, there was some options that we opted out of. We did not go with, um, full, uh, pro licenses for everybody. The only two people that will get the pro license, it would be Heather and Bethany. Um, and that gives them the option to redact videos and do stuff like that where the rest of the guys are just gonna have the basic license to go in and label their video. Stuff like that. We did go with eight body cams instead of. Get the full staff. The reason I did that is if we get to full staff. And if something happens, we still, yes, it's a, it's a no questions asked with the, the Technology Assurance Plan. But we still would have a delayed time where we wouldn't have a camera. So that's why I wanted a spare camera that we could put into service if one of them would get lost, damaged or stolen or whatever. Um, the tasers, we're only going with seven. So if we're at full staff, each guy will have one, we won't have any spares. And then like I said, with the fleet cameras, we went with four. Um, my squad won't have a fleet camera in it, but the fleet cameras that we are looking at, the fleet three. If you're asking what the L, A L P R is, that's the automatic license plate reader. Um, and that would be integrated with the state system. And once we get the flock, the two flock cameras put up in town. They will actually interlink with one another to kind of coincide with one another to give us more information on like stolen plates. A person or revoke driver's license, but it has to be information that's in the system that we can see. But we can also build our own, what they call hot sheet. So if we're looking for, uh, red Mustang that did a gas drive off at the BP. We can put that in the systems and those systems will start recording and we can go back to whatever timeframe we need. To check and see if that vehicle, which, you know, depending on which way they went through town. If one of the guys drove past it, whatever, that, the technology's there, the flock system that we're getting is. I, I will say it's a great tool. We use it in St. Croix Falls because we already, they already have it over there. Um, it's, it's a really good tool to have, um, and with these two systems, it's, it'll help us in a lot of different investigations and stuff.
My question is, um, since we're looking at a ten year contract. I really, in ten years, are we gonna have extremely outdated? Equipment or does that get?
That's why when, when we're talking the thirty, sixty, ninety and one twenty months on the contract. The body cams every thirty months, they get sent in, they send us the brand new, up to date, latest, greatest. Same with the squad cams at sixty and one twenty, so they're, they're only at each half of the contract. They would get upgraded to the latest and greatest technology. Tasers are the only thing unless we paid the additional price, because they don't know what the latest and greatest is gonna be in ten years. That's all. That's why that's at a five year and then at that five year, we will get brand new tasers, but they'll still be the TASER tens. They won't be the latest, greatest, but they will be brand new TASER.
So the way, the way this, just to say it all back. This gives you. A single point of management for your, all of your equipment that's listed here, which now you have three.
Three different contracts.
There's sort of a hardware assurance program built in, not just for. Replacement or repair, but refresh at thirty, sixty, ninety. As well as, um. Kind of leveling your cost. Yearly so that it stays, it's a level cost.
Right, and they, and, and Cynthia kind of hit on this at the meeting that we had with her yesterday. There is, the reason that you see a little bit more of an increase on the ten year is that there's a four percent. Already increase added into that because they don't know what inflation's gonna do, but they know it's gonna go up. So that's why there's a little bit higher cost in the ten year versus the five year. But there's also, looking at it the way it's laid out, it kind of looks that way too, but. You gotta think of it this way, if you put fifty thousand dollars down. On the plan for five years versus fifty thousand for ten years, your amount for each year decreases, so it's a higher bill. So, but that's why I, I went with fifty thousand. I thought that was a good amount to get this program. Set in place that we're not paying a large bill and it takes. Decent burden off of that and then we're set for the next ten years of what we're paying.
And the one other thing that I, and I picked up, I think when you were, when, uh, we were getting a description was. Um, it kind of provides you with a cross-platform. Um, data situation, so you don't have to care as much about what, what it's, what your video is, what the other stuff is. And you don't have to have officers trying to figure out how to plug that into the system.
Correct.
Which is huge.
And it's huge for the DA's office and also for the, I don't know, I haven't dealt with the city attorney a lot here, but in St. Croix Falls, we did. For a lot of our cases, having the body cam, it's so easy that you can jump on my laptop and I can pull up my case. And I can hook it into this system and if I got played for court, I can. When we send it to the DA's office, we used to have to put it on floppy disks and either mail it to them, transport it up to them. Now it's all sent electronically. It's all secure so that you don't have to worry about somebody hacking into the system or taking any of your videos or tempering with them. Um, another thing that. Axon and evidence.com does, it makes it so that these videos can't be leaked. We can set it up, let, and I'll use it for another example, because I know that better than I do here. St. Croix Falls, when they had their shooting, they released the video, but the video could only be released. And it couldn't be rerecorded and put like on to YouTube or anything like that. Nobody could take it. Manipulate it or anything like that. It's, it's in its secured form. So there's different ways, and I know Cynthia kind of talked about this the other day, that that type of information is. You, you don't want it, yeah, and that's what they're, they're priding their company on, is the secure aspect of it and that's why. The federal, the FBI relies so heavily on their data because they're the standard of what everybody's using. So, um, there, we just had a huge audit. Unformed the CJIS. And that's what the, the Federal Bureau of Investigations, we just had a big audit on that. And because of the fact that we do have Axon, that we can get through the audit a lot easier than. Just that these departments that don't have it. So it's, it's, it's very beneficial for the department and, um. It, it has made a big difference for, for the girls up here.
We have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Um, just because it is potentially a ten year contract and that's a long time. Um, it sounds like you've worked with them in the past, is that correct?
Correct.
And you've had a decent experience with them?
Yes, we've had them in St. Croix Falls, uh, Cynthia, I don't know if you can. It's, it's been a couple of years, I know that. That we've had it over there. I don't know if she remembered. She, I don't think she was involved when we got it. But it is, it's, it's a system that, well, with Walmart, we had so much. Um, and I'll tell you that Walmart won't transfer their videos through Axon just because. They're such a large company, but Menards did. And with dealing with Menards on theft cases, it was great. They could just, I could call them up and say, hey, I need this video from this date. At this time, at this register. And bang, the next less than thirty minutes, I had that video. It's already labeled to my case number. It's directed to me, I can review it and then I can store it into the system. Um, it's body cam wise. Um, like I said, the biggest thing with, with the body cams is the guys have to remember to go and categorize their videos, otherwise it just sits there. But the video footage is very clear, it's very good, um, you don't worry about it. Um, I've even reviewed some of the guys here's videos and they are really good. Now, one of the things we haven't talked about that's on here is the signal, signal sidearm indicators. And we don't have them yet, but we had them in St. Croix Falls and what that is, is. If I pull my gun out of the holster, I have a, an indicator on the side of my holster that tells my camera that I just pulled my gun out. It activates my camera, but it doesn't only activate my camera. If there's any other officer around me. All those cameras activate at once. Same with the tasers. You pull out your TASER, you activate it so that it's turned on. It trips all the cameras and anybody that's got a camera around me, it trips them all on. So the thing with that is now you have different points of view. In a single incident and you don't have to worry about the other guys going, oh man, Dan just pulled his gun. I gotta turn my camera on. No, because they all turn on. Same with, if you have the activation in the light bar switch in the squad car, you turn your light bar on, the cameras turn on. Um, so there's a lot of good features. Um, same with the, the squad cams, when you activate your lights, the squad cams turn on automatically. So they have a lot of built in features that are really great that. You don't have to worry about the guy saying, you know, like I said, saying, oh, I forgot to turn my camera. The biggest problem is. Making sure that the guys grab their camera when it come to work, because you gotta dock them, they gotta charge, um, you can get about. If I leave mine on like it is right now where it's just in the ready stage, I can go about. A shift and a half before it runs out, but if you put it in the sleep mode, you probably can get. Uh, Cynthia might know that for me about three days, maybe more on a single charge. If I'm right.
Yes, yeah, so the body fork counts, uh, thirteen plus hour shift battery life.
Yeah, so. So you don't have to worry, as long as the guys are charging them and putting them on the docks, you don't have to worry about. There is other features where if. The guys need immediate access to the cameras, you can actually hook a cord into these, plug them into your. Uh, mobile computer and actually start reviewing the video immediately. Uh, where these have to be docked, when you put them in dock, it takes a while for them to download, but if they do it on the can. Do it on the can, on the computer, they can pretty much see it almost immediately. Is that, I believe that's correct, right Cynthia?
Correct, yep. You are also going to have the ability to view it back, uh, in the lightweight dashboard app. That comes with the Fleet Three system as well. So you'll be able to review that as well as the in-car footage. Um, right on the MDT that you have just in your squad.
And then with the tasers, if you look down a little ways, it says the duty cartridge replenishment. So if we do training, if we, somebody uses a taser or anything like that. We call up Cynthia, we say, hey, we, we use a couple cartridges. They send them to us for free. That's all included in. Um, the other thing that's on this too, if you look at it, if, if you look down, it says the Hulk suit and target and frame. What that is, the Hulk suit is like a big. Green Hulk suit, so you can actually do live training with somebody where they don't. And then, uh, the target is just a flat target with its own stand that you can use to do some training. Um, through this, if we do the tenure program. Uh, we get, um, four instructor vault, uh, vouchers that we can use whatever way we want. If we do the tenure program, we also get the two days of training. Through our department, at our department. Hopefully, oh, there's the Hulk suit. That up there, um, and they just shoot out like little Velcro probes, so you don't have to pull probes out. Um, we would host the training and I hope I get this right Cynthia, that it costs about sixty eight hundred dollars. We get it for free. Axon puts it on, they send their people here to put it on. And then anybody that we have come to our training, up to ten people. Um, that money, I believe if I'm right Cynthia, comes back to the department. So it'd be money that would come to us for hosting the training, correct?
Correct, yep.
So, so instead of the sixty eight hundred dollars, it would cost us nothing. And then any, if we got ten people to come and we charge them even five hundred dollars a piece, that's five thousand dollars coming back to us. Through this.
Um, another question, just because I feel like I need to ask it. Um, in the event that we would need to rewrite the contract or break the contract, what. Eh, are we on the hook for as far as fees, that kind of thing?
Okay, so I didn't include it because I have a, this is their master service. Processing. It is forty pages long. Um, I thought Heather or Bethany put page three. In your packet, I hope they did.
Yes, definitely this.
And that explains what happens if there's a breach either by them, by the agent. Termination, but I can let Cynthia talk about that because she's way better at describing that than I am, so.
Yeah, um, and so high level essentially, um, you, you can look at the, the section sixteen. Um, but really in the most simplistic terms, we do have a non-appropriations clause, so for whatever reason. Should funding fall through at any point, um. It essentially gives you the, the out of the contract.
And because we're doing, the other way was kind of explained to me, because we're paying it on a yearly basis, what we're paying out. That if, for some reason, let's say their company folds, which I don't think it's going to, that we just end the payment. And we'd have to look for a new vendor. So technically, we're not out anymore. Like we wouldn't have to continue to pay on the contract because the contract would end. So, um, but, um. Looking at their, like I said, they're, they're the top people in, in the United States right now and. Got a pretty good hold on this stuff, so. Um, and then like I said, instead of going five years and then have to renegotiate this for a higher cost. Ten years where we know for the next ten years, this is how much we're paying each year for the ten years.
Um, I'm curious what we're currently paying for our three different contracts that we have in place for these different pieces of equipment?
Uh, Cynthia, do you have that?
Um, yes, let me just pull it up here really quick. Sorry, it's on a different, uh, on one of our, our many variations or reiterations of, uh. Program proposals. Sorry, there's a little fly. Uh, and so I have them on slides individually, um. So I mean, we can start with. Um, the body camera. Are you able to see this? Okay?
Yes.
Now I can.
Okay, awesome. Um, so this is the body camera one. Um, this kind of shows you, um, right now what was included on the contract and, and where. Um, their current usage was, right? So a bit over storage. Um, however, like kind of just showing in, in terms of being partners, right? Like we never. Cut you off, like we never shut you down, we never delete things on you. Uh, it just kind of more so warrants a conversation. Uh, during these, these contracts renewal talks, um, to make sure that we get you off on the right footing and so that's what we did. Uh, and we kind of were able to reevaluate how the tagging process is going. Um, we also have. The, uh, current. Um, for six taser sevens, um, so this is actually one, uh, one less than the new agreement that we would have moving forward. Then. This one here is the fleet system. Um, so the fleet system. This is kind of an example of what happens if at any point you need to add on, right? We just be essentially do a co-term to the original agreement. Um, and then so this third column here shows the, um. Um, the combined cost of the two.
And I believe when they first got them, they put money down ahead. Or at least for the fleet. Extra money down.
Correct, yeah, then I, um, I know during our original conversations, we had also worked up. Um, this side by side of, okay, so for comparison sake, right? This was your existing contract, this is what you're paying, and then this is the twenty twenty-three pricing equivalent. Um, so this con, this original contract gives you a little example of, um, what the pricing was like about four years ago. Uh, and where it, where it stands now, uh, moving forward. So kind of alluding to. Uh, the additional benefits of the ten year program, locking in that pricing. Um, to, to know what you guys are going to be looking at for the next ten years.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Sorry, fly. Left my door open. The dogs wanted to run around outside.
So the reason, the big push is that they're looking at. This quote ending the twenty second. And with that ending, we're more unlikely going to get pushed into twenty twenty-four pricing. So, I know it's a lot to take in and. I got thrown into this too, so. I've been working a lot on it, try to get this figured out, so.
So the ask at this point is. The fifty thousand plus assigned agreement for, for five or ten years. And is that something that we have? In the police budget that we can. Use at this point?
Ben told me, yes.
There, there's not very much, if you, if you look, there will, the only real, the only, uh. Area that there's any money left is in, um. Payroll, basically. And.
Police Department payroll.
Yes, yeah, otherwise pretty much every part of the police budget is over budget.
Like I said, we're, I guarantee you, we're not getting any new applicants until after the first. A miracle happens between now and then, but we've had our app out there for how many weeks now and we've gotten zero application? But I had a recruit that we could have sent to the recruit school, but that person backed down on me, so we're back down.
Do you think this technology is something that could potentially attract applicants in the department?
I think so. I mean, you're. Got the latest and greatest technology. I mean, a lot of these young guys, they probably know this stuff way better than, than I do. And, um. Emery doesn't have a, a lot to really offer. I mean, because you don't have a whole lot of room for advancement, we're not that big of a department. Um, a lot of these young guys are looking for. SWAT, whatever else they're looking for and investigations, whatever. But what you will have here is you're going to have a good group of officers. You're going to have good equipment and I've seen some really bad equipment. So, this department's got pretty really good equipment. This will help. Um, and then for transparency and liability. Can't argue with this stuff because I tell you, if you've got a. Everybody's talking about bad officers, you want to find a bad officer, look at their body cam, you're going to find them real quick. Um, that stuff doesn't lie, um, because a lot of times people, when especially if it turns on its own. They don't remember that it's on and if they're bad on. The technology, it's. I think it would help. Bring people in, I'm not going to say it's gonna bring people in, but. One other thing.
This is more or less, um, enhancing what we've got in place already.
Right, and because of our contracts coming up.
Right. My only question is, do we have any responsibility to? Get a different quote, go someplace, look someplace else. This is all short term, short notice, I know, but. Um. I don't know if we, if that fits within.
Living in other companies out there, if you go with other companies. They don't have the security and the technology that these guys have, what you would have to go and buy. Our individual cameras that you'd have to individually, because we had them in St. Croix for a while. You have to have your own system, you have to download them all, you have to get the right. System to work so that the DA's office can review them. Don't have the program that Axon has, that makes it so easy to transfer data and, um, keep up with the. All the laws that are changing all the time on it, so.
Apologize, can y'all hear me? Nice to meet y'all. I think this is the first time I popped up on the video screen. My name is Lauren Klein, I'm our Senior Director of Sales. Uh, so I oversee agencies one to a hundred sworn, um, in our west and central regions. Uh, one of the things we could provide to make everybody feel a little more comfortable is just sole source documentation. Showing that we're the only vendor that has, uh, body camera activation with the taser ten. Um, we're the only company that, that has the taser ten there, so, um, if you want us to send that over, we're more than happy to. And then the other piece, I know that we were talking about like what's left in the budget. Um, we do have flexibility for that invoice plan. To move funds around, um, whether, you know, you, you secure that fifty thousand and we can put that towards the first year payment. Or if you were only to get forty-five thousand, um, that's something we could be flexible with, so I know it sounds like somebody. Uh, from finance might be out sick tonight, but if you want to just let us know on that, we're happy to make adjustments to the quote. So that we can ensure that, um, that's not a barrier to entry, uh, from our end as well.
Thank you. I, I really don't have a concern with, uh. Using somebody different just because we've been using them.
I had to ask the question.
No, I, no, and I guess why I didn't ask it, because we were already using those, so.
Oh, I know.
I have a.
And that's why I asked him if this is an enhancement rather than a new.
I'm really comfortable with that.
I'm trying to ask all the questions so that people, that other people will have.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, they're, they're a solid.
There's a lot of value in protecting technology. Even, even through a longer contract.
Yeah.
Um. It's. It's a lot easier to manage a single contract. And trying to remember three of them when they come due. And how old is your equipment and is it due for an upgrade or will push it off another year?
Right, and that's what's nice about the upgrade of this system, that we don't have to think about it. They will contact us and say, hey, you're at your thirty.
The other thing, this puts everybody at the same level. You're not, you don't have to say this car's. Two versions behind, this body cam is now the newest one, but you can't, it's not the same reader as the other was.
That was.
I know all those things.
About buying one camera right now versus the other three that we have. Is just the technology difference between those.
Okay.
The issue I have, you know, like everyone is. You know, we're, this is without much ado, because we're going to get, we are. Most likely going to have to raise the starting salaries, which probably won't affect us till after the first of the year. But we're adding twenty thousand dollars to the budget by doing that. Just by raising starting officers and I, I support that. I mean, I think it's something that. Uh, probably won't make a lot of difference, but it might. At least, at least they will stop or not, not just bypass us when they scroll down to see. Um, the question is always, can we afford it, you know? We're on over a million bucks with the, with the, our police department. Um. You know? Till, till, and we still got the same twenty nine hundred and eighty people in town paying for it, so. Um. Makes some sense, you know, I, I think the, the, the equipment is good, uh, the, the process is good. Um. It's just the reason some people don't drive BMWs, they drive Fords, you know, or Chevrolets or whatever.
Well, if it's a truck, it's the same price as a BMW.
Yeah, have you bought a BMW lately? Um, and.
Truck lately.
Yeah, it just is.
I'll, I'll throw my two cents in. I think anytime you can leverage technology, you need to do it. And, and you know, this, this takes three. Different what, companies or programs?
Contracts.
Contracts and, 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 and streamlines it, but, but you are paying more for it. Thought about it.
So if you get more produ- productivity out of your, uh, the people because of it, then I think. You know, I think that's a good selling point, if, if your people are more productive. Um.
There's, there's good.
We only have, you know, four, makes pretty good sense to make them more productive, um. If you have forty, then it makes a lot of sense to make them more productive, you know? Um, so I, I too, you know, a, a ten year commitment for anything is. A long, long, long time, especially for, you know, when you commit. Uh, the next ten years of Amory City Councils to spending that money, you know. The one time, one time you gotta justify, but ten years from now, who knows, you know, so.
But I can guarantee you ten years from now, you're not going to get it for this price either.
No, no, I, that's, that's a given, you know?
Right.
So just.
I have to ask the question and, and no, I wasn't daydreaming, I was doing some calculations on my phone. Um, what is the reason for the big jump between five years and ten years? The five thousand dollar difference in price? The five thousand dollar difference in price?
Because when you do it the five year, that's fifty thousand covering five years, so that's ten thousand dollars a year that you're you're making up. Now you're gonna take fifty thousand split into ten years, and now you're down to five thousand dollars per year, so that other price goes up by five thousand dollars.
What fifty thousand dollars are we spreading between five years versus?
That's really the debate, the the per year cost is pretty reasonable after you pay that. It's like, you know, and you see that ad, you can rent a Beamer for four hundred dollars a year. Oh, by the way, there's twelve thousand dollars down payment right up front, that's that's what this is.
You pay the fifty fifty thousand whether you do it for five or ten.
You divided.
Yeah, so that's where the difference.
Sure, there's some there's some protection built into that.
Protection by Exxon, protect themselves.
Is there, is there any calculated price as to a ten year contract without the fifty thousand dollars down?
Yeah, that would be the Yeah, the two hundred and sixty-three.
It's here.
I'd buy a hundred and twenty.
First page, right?
Yeah.
Yes, you take ten thousand off there, you take five thousand there, that's the difference.
Yeah.
And then you also gotta remember that if we wait, we won't get the buyback between the fourteen thousand and thirty thousand that they're offering us now for our current equipment to go back to them.
Well, if we didn't do the bite on it, it comes out to twenty one thousand and change.
Well, I'm with Roger on this. I think that the enhanced technology in this program is very valuable.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just trying to convince myself that ten years is reasonable amount of time. I have a hard time with doing it any contract for ten years.
But that's what the nice part about the TAP program, buying into that TAP program, is that we're getting the advanced technology at those intervals, so we're not not up with this.
Yeah, and I'm I understand that part. I I'm 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 stuck on the ten year contract. I understand technology pretty well, but I do. Um, it also precludes you from making any changes unless you had to bail out of the contract.
Oh, we can, if we wanna make changes.
No, I mean, I mean, change vendors.
Right, but that would, then you would just terminate the contract altogether, which is on that form that they said we can do. Um, but if we wanted, let's say.
And I don't anticipate that we would.
And let's say we wanted to add another Taser, we would contact them. Whatever the difference would be to add that back in. Wouldn't change your whole contract, it would just change the price on that brand new Taser if you bought another or whatever other program you added into it.
Oh, let's say in three years, we decide that our the size of our team is gonna be smaller. I'm not saying that that's what we're gonna do, but let's say we can't get officers, we don't consistently need the amount of equipment that we're signing on for now. We can reduce without penalty, is that accurate?
Question for those ladies.
Yeah, I'm happy to take that one. Um, at that point, it would, it's a true partnership, right? So we'd wanna get on a call and understand like, are you on the verge of hiring? Is there anything we can do to help, right? Um, at that point, if if you didn't need like a body cameras or tasers or something else happened, yeah, at that point, we would be able to rewrite your contract. Um, so we could adjust an ebb and flow. Um, so i- it's really just about like communication back and forth with us and a true partnership of saying we wanna put a program together that matches the needs of the agency. This is obviously scoped for today with most of the time agencies, I would say, growing. Um, we do have situations where agencies merge, right? I had that this morning, uh two agencies in Minnesota merging together that are eight sworn each. Um, and so we deal with that stuff all the time, so it's just a matter of communication, making sure that we've got the right contract set up for you guys.
Well, comparing the budget to actual on the police department budget, I mean, I I there is the money there in order to pull for a down payment. I just really have a hard time signing a ten year contract for anything, so I don't know that I would be in favor of that, but I am one hundred percent in favor of going forward with this on a five year basis, because I think it it only makes sense. But I I just have a really hard time signing anything for ten years. It's a long time.
My baby will be in middle school.
Yep, a long time, who knows, a lot of things change.
You know, I would I would say this, any contracts renegotiable. And you you know, it's gotta be fair to both sides. And and I have no reason to believe otherwise that if we have a contract for ten years and and things change, you know, that we could sit down and and at least have a discussion. It's sometimes it goes well and sometimes it costs you a lot, but um, you know, that's, yeah, that's a risk. I I I agree with it. But I don't think it's a big enough risk not to do it, so.
I agree, and the uh updated intervals for all the equipment on a scheduled basis. I don't see a problem with the ten years, I really don't.
Right.
I mean, we're locking in a price for ten years.
And and we're and we're updating technology. That would, that's a bigger concern, so we're not stuck with a Studebaker, you know what?
Right, so I mean, you're you're not, it's not a bad deal, cuz you're not stuck with the same equipment for the whole ten years, you're getting.
Yeah. The other question is that um is is your budget going forward? Um, support the payment schedule for five year or ten year?
Yeah, outside of the fifty thousand, yes, it does. Um, pretty much, I think, I think I just wrote down figures, I think it was, we pay like twelve thousand dollars a year.
It's like almost thirteen or fourteen.
Almost thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
You're gonna go up.
So we're paying for our our individual contracts.
So you're looking at another
We're just trying to make sure everything.
Yeah, and just to just to also reiterate, um, something I said earlier.
We're not paying ten to twelve more.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah.
If you go ten years.
Yeah.
Now, because what they're showing.
You go to the ten year.
Eight different slides, you'd have to add them all together.
Yeah, we're paying twelve eight eighty-eight basically now for our con for our contract.
He went up to twenty six thousand, that's another fourteen thousand a year that you'd be paying above what you're paying now.
The annual cost is twenty six thousand dollars, that's the way to look at it.
And currently budgeted is thirteen.
And for that, we get updated equipment. And updated technology right along the way.
For the camera with advanced technology. Buying into the TAP program, so we get this updated equipment in those intervals. We are getting um uh I think we're staying with seven tasers. We did not go to eight. Um, just cuz I didn't feel that we should go to eight. Um, just that we're looking at seven guys.
How confident are you that we're gonna get back to seven guys?
Not at all.
I I I'm I'm I think we, I mean, that's another discussion for another day. Options that we may have to start looking at, and it might come all the way down to looking at two year program. Snagging these guys in the two year program and then sponsoring them through the recruit school to have our hands on them and sign a contract with them. Um, I think a lot of departments are doing that, and we're kind of behind the eight ball where a lot of the other places around here have already.
Already done it, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think here's the deal, until we hit thirty five hundred, don't bring a subject up. Cuz we had, cuz you can't justify seven officers and a chief with with three thousand people. Nobody in the world does that.
Right now, it's just the six officers and the chief.
Exactly.
So I mean, I would just be happy to get Paul back off medical leave for one and then start getting some.
Yep. Yep.
Well, I'm just wondering on this equipment, do we need to go to seven, eight on some of these items?
Well, like I said, with the eight on the body cams is if we do get the full staff, that leaves us one spare. And like I said, one of these breaks or something, then they can switch over to that other camera while we're getting sent the new camera, so.
How much of an effect would it be if we if we go with five instead of eight? And then we can add on as needed, uh you know, additional cameras as needed and put it on the, you know, adjust the contract as it will go.
Lead time on cameras is a while, isn't it?
What?
The lead time on cameras is a is a bit, isn't it?
And what is it, one twenty, one night, hundred and twenty days?
So the lead time on the body cameras uh is about four weeks. If the one twenty days is for the Taser ten.
So, but then you're, if you do, if you're at five, which is gonna leave us at the bare minimum, if something gets broke, we're already behind. And now we gotta adjust their pricing where this is a set price, we have the equipment, we can keep moving forward. Where if we drop down for dropping, yeah, currently we're dropping the price down, but then we're gonna add back in at a new price range for the new cameras as we need them, so.
Isn't each camera associated with each officer?
It is, it is, it's.
So you can't borrow from some.
You're right, so like, um, Kip can't take mine cuz mine actually tells me my number on it, and then when it's recording, all the recording footage stamps my number on it and the time in that. So, yeah, and when we do the evidence thing, if Peter, Kip, or Paul, or Jane picks my camera and they use it because by mistake, well, now they can't find their evidence because now all that evidence is on my system under my login and the way the system's set up, the other officers cannot jump in and see somebody else's video footage. Simple reason that I've watched enough guys where people, something bad happens or whatever, something goofy happens, and then pretty soon you got guys in watching other guys' videos and it's being spread around, and I don't want that.
Yep.
Well, that's why it's the importance of having each officer have their own camera that's directed for them, so. And then, like I said, then that camera also is pretty much linked with the other stuff too, so.
I think it's decision time.
Yeah, I I agree.
Well, I make the motion that we go forward with it. We've got the fifty thousand in the police budget through payroll and so on.
Which one? Five year or ten year?
The ten year.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to go forward with the ten year plan, paying fifty thousand dollars this year. Hold those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So this is to send it to the council on the sixth of December, and that we talked about already, that the sixth would still, we'd still.
They're gonna get the go ahead because of the November twenty second deadline?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically a majority approved it, so unless, you know, the sky falls between now and then, I don't know why the vote would necessarily change in the in the negative. So it's almost gospel.
That's kind of an important piece of it.
Yeah, yes. We'll move forward.
All right, Cynthia, I'll contact you tomorrow.
Um, thank you for staying on and giving us, um, you know, answering the questions as randomly as we ask them. So appreciate your expertise.
Yeah, of course, and thanks so much for having us, and uh, yeah, if any other questions pop up, don't hesitate, reach out. Chief can give you my personal contact information, so uh anything you guys need, we're happy to help.
All right, Sid, thanks, yeah, like I said, I'll get a hold of you tomorrow.
Yeah, chat to me.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
We are um in the switched around agenda. We're at the South Industrial Park and Alter Contract.
Yes, and um that came to be because Rick had mentioned that we should probably Yeah, yeah, let him explain it, but um I got Carrie stopped by from Compass, and he said, yeah, I'd like you to sign some paperwork so that I can get out of this contract as we wanna look at. Rick wanted to look at other realtors that would probably be more in line with what we're trying to accomplish with the sale of the South.
The request came from A D C um that you firm that we had, um you know, we've had numbers of times, we'll still keep them for various other things, but for uh was felt like for the industrial development part of the uh our park that we maybe aren't getting the best bang for the buck. Not that it costs us anything, it hasn't cost us anything to to through any of the realtors, uh but that we maybe weren't getting the exposure that a firm that deals primarily with uh commercial property and commercial or industrial property, and so um that came from Paul. Uh, I called Carrie, there's no, no uh issues with getting out of the contract other than just signing that we as of this and such date. I don't think they had any people that, you know, they have, if you cancel the contract, if they've made contact with other pay people, they still would get paid if those other people came forward, uh.
One thing out of that conversation that we did have though was, um, anything that they've listed on the MLS, all these different entities that they've worked with, stop. So as soon as we sign that paperwork, we don't have anybody out there um listing our property until it's somebody else.
Till we sign with the new company.
Has our current real estate person had any showings or any interest shown at all?
I don't think so.
Um, and it's, you know, he said he's put in drone footage, he's put up a banner. Done some things like that. Um, he he understands the cost of business. He said that that would be you know, part of what he had to pay to get our listing done, so he doesn't have any animosity towards that. Um, he doesn't have any, you know, he said, whatever you feel like you want to do is fine, but I just want to throw that in there, so if we do cancel this, we have to think about what we're gonna do to list it again because it it's not listed anywhere then, so.
I did talk to Paul today, and it sounded to me like he had some pretty good contacts that he has um he he attended a an EDC regional conference and and came away with some some pretty good information in a couple of places that we. Some pretty good information into a couple of places that would be interested, so I think that. If we tell Paul to find somebody like that, he would have something to to get us started in.
Yeah, that's what we need to do.
And I think. Having someone who um, has an interest in. West Central Wisconsin as a commercial property at the size we are. That's, you know, we need somebody who can do that.
And I didn't feel comfortable signing this. Because I, I want you all to weigh in on that, so that's why we're doing this tonight, so.
Well, I don't see the, I don't see a downside. With releasing him and getting more of a commercial broker involved, we haven't.
They have an.
We haven't had any showing, we haven't had any interest, so I don't see we're. Not having an M L S listing for a while is gonna be a detriment, I think we should.
And maybe, I don't know, uh, if the commercial folks, the realtors, if they. Have their, uh, I would think they have to have their own M L S or or something anyway, so I don't. I don't think that's a downside at all.
Right. I say we go ahead and release that contract. If we, if we need a motion, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Kind of feel like it's putting the horse, horse before, or the cart before the horse. If we don't have anybody else in place at this point in time, why would we release him now?
That's my question.
Wait until we have even some. Conversations with commercial real estate agents before we even consider. Taking it down, I think that's backwards.
That's.
I think Paul has had conversations with some of, with some of the other uh, A D.
Well, show, show us then.
Yeah, exactly. Bring it to us. I don't, I don't feel comfortable releasing a contract if we don't have somebody else in place already. We're already complaining about the fact that we don't have any movement on it. Well, it's gonna be even that much longer without any movement.
Weeks?
Show me.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's valid, uh, personally, but. I think it's worthwhile trying somebody different to.
Not saying it's not worth trying. What I'm saying is have some people in place. And have some conversations with them as to what they're going to give us before we cancel a current contract.
But our current contract isn't giving us anything.
Then you're gonna have nothing until you have another contract.
Realtor onto it, you know, a commercial Realtor.
Will agree to disagree, call the vote.
That's fine. Motion made and seconded. That we've released the contract or the South Industrial Park. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. And we need to get ahold of Paul.
Yeah.
Worth with.
Something better.
And I don't. Think that has, does that have, doesn't have to go to, to uh. Also on the sixth, I don't think, does it? There's, there's no doubt, there's no dollar, that the new one will, will may come by the sixth.
Releasing the contract, I think it has to go to the council.
Yeah.
Cause they say this goes to December sixth.
You can ask the next. I think it's, this is a recommendation to the council.
I don't think we ever voted on, on when we hired the, those guys to put it up there, but I, that's all right.
Yeah, well, I, I agree with, with hiring. I think we can go ahead, we don't have to make all those decisions, but we, we are in a contract. And so I think for that, we, we do need a motion, so.
Not a biggie, no.
Well, this is a forwarded to council. Just piling my crap up here, cause I have, I have too much crap, sorry. Um, so I put too much up there. Um, campground pricing discussion.
Taylor got a bunch of.
Have we, have we ground you down to falling asleep back there, okay?
Hello? To figure out what they are charging for their nightly, weekly, monthly rentals. And then I also figured out what they're offering with those, um, some campgrounds have less electric, like. Waterage or amps hookup wise, um, some charge four showers. All around, I would say we're the best. Rounded with all of our electrical hookups, water sewer and our free showers, so, um. Based off of the prices that came back, it looks like we're very justified in increasing ours, especially our monthly. So. And I did do some looking, I know there was some discussion about maybe if they have more air conditioners trying to charge them more for those. And that does not seem like something that would really fly, especially because there's no guarantee they're going to be using their air conditioners and. It's just a lot cleaner if we set a base nightly price and a base monthly price.
Yeah, I think I agree, it would be pretty tough to.
Yeah, how do you monitor?
Monitor that one, yeah. So what's the recommendation for cost or pricing?
I guess if, um, I know there was some discussion the last time about between thirty five and forty, so. Thirty five or forty, so I think either would be justified, it's up to you guys ultimately and then, um. It looks like we could do between six fifty or seventy, six hundred and fifty or seven hundred for our monthly.
I want to clarify something, when we're talking about the air conditioners, everybody can have an air conditioner, we're talking if they have multiple air.
Yeah, I understand.
Want to clarify that.
Yep, I saw a couple of the bigger ones that have one on each end.
So we could go to thirty five dollars per night. Easily, I think, to justify that and.
Six fifty?
Six fifty, I mean, the original is at eight ten for a month. Or like six seventy five, yeah, we could easily go to six fifty and be.
Well, we had quite, had more people, or quite a few people inquire about it, the annual rates, right? Monthly rate?
What do we limit, what do we limit, um, spaces to annual?
It actually kind of helps us in that way if we can like open that up more in these spots.
So what do we need to, we need a motion to do this or? Okay, I make a motion that we move it to thirty five dollars per night and six fifty monthly.
Is your second?
I'll second it.
Good, motion made and seconded to. Change our nightly fee for the campground to thirty five dollars and the monthly to six fifty. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Move to count, to move to the council. Are we, are we up to seven now?
Came about because, um, Eric had a good. You know, when you've got those spots sitting there at the Sulein Park and people need to get in and use the chargers, if there's somebody parked there.
There's only two spots.
Only two spots, but there's four chargers, so two per charging station, so. Would be four spots for the.
I agree with the ordinance, I, I'm, would move to, uh, send the. Ordinance oh six twenty twenty three and concerning E V parking spot zoning to the council.
Okay, motion made and seconded to.
Sorry.
Ordinance zero six twenty twenty three. Um. Or preventative blocking of electric vehicle charger spots and and forwarding this to the council.
You know, that's a question, are we gonna, are we gonna paint those areas a significant color difference that we can?
Talked about that.
I haven't painted, I'm gonna put signs up. As soon as I can, but yeah.
Okay.
The question.
Thank you.
You know, you don't want to paint them blue because obviously it was handicapped, so maybe like a lime green or something that. You know, we're making it a green space or something, so.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Forward to council. Okay, the next one is ordinance zero seven twenty twenty three blighted properties.
About, because Rick, Rick has some issues with some of the commercial properties and I do too, um. They're not. Care of making sure that they're. Status quo. We need to get something in place for those properties, so. We have some teeth behind what we need to do to clean up some of those properties.
Before Fall Festival, I had to go door knocking and asking people to clean up.
And I, and I think, you know, everybody's pretty much aware of, uh, you know, Keller Avenue is our mains, our mainstream and. We have some buildings that are just not only. You know, they're just distasteful and not, uh, they don't reflect the Amory community at all and yet they're the first thing people see. Um. So I asked for the, for this ordinance, as I looked at, the only. Thing that I thought was we've asked, we're asking the building inspector. And I'm guessing if we ask the building inspector to do that. He can, but I'm sure he's gonna want to be reimbursed for those extra inspection type things.
Confirm that with him because that would make more sense for him to do that. Cause that's in his wheelhouse.
The other question I have is under D two, when it just says the property owner shall have a reasonable time. Detained by the city, I don't know what that is.
What is a reasonable?
Yeah, I think we should put some time on.
We didn't think probably falls when we had blighted property. Either two weeks or thirty days.
Yeah, I just think there should be a number.
Right, we can put a number.
Most of those letters that went out, we didn't use the building inspector, that it actually came like from the P D. From the chief that would send a letter to these folks and we would stop and. And um, the letter. Advised and to clean up their property, but it's up to you guys how you want to do it, but.
That seems like a cleaner system to me.
And then we can take some reports directed to our department and then we can go check it out if it is. We can do where we stop and just tell them right off the bat. Clean up your property. Give them a week if it's not being cleaned up, then give them a letter with. The two weeks or the thirty days beyond that.
So is this going to be limited to commercial property?
For, we have an ordinance in place. For other.
This is residential.
I need to see that.
So then, so then if this is commercial property, then we're, we should be okay with it then.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And I think the thirty days is reasonable.
And the building inspector can still, yeah.
Yeah, that's why you need.
We have, the P D, it should be.
This doesn't say commercials though.
No, so we need to.
Commercial property.
And with the thirty days, is that thirty days to fix whatever needs to be fixed or is it thirty days to? Start fixing because some of the properties in town are gonna need more than thirty days in order to actually.
Respond with an action plan?
I think, I think you're right, we need to, it needs to be. Thirty days and you gotta have a plan here, how you're gonna mitigate this.
You can't get a contractor.
No, 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 you can't, so.
Some of the buildings need some serious help.
Oh, I know.
Um, and so. We should probably also think about a fee schedule if the building inspector has to cite. This, you know, I mean, it's one thing, you give them, give them thirty days to come up with a plan, if they don't come up with a plan, then you cite them. And.
Out with him too, because he's.
Yeah, yeah.
He's kind of the driver on this.
Yeah, so I think, I think that's. You know, if you don't put the penalty in there to start with, then. So what, yeah, I'm in violation, take a hike, you know?
Spot in our ordinance that is specific two feet's fee schedule, so we can just reference that.
Okay, right. Otherwise you're constantly changing these things.
Exactly.
Yes. Um. And I don't, does our building inspector have citation authority?
Oh, he's had to have it recently.
Hey, so, so we need to make sure that. When he, that that's a municipal violation, so he can bring him to court here in Amory.
Has done that. Yep.
I make a motion to move ordinance zero seven twenty twenty three blighted properties with the changes. That we have all just suggested to. The full council.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Yeah, okay.
Of time. I want you to look at these ordn, these uh, policies very closely. And get back to me, I'm not gonna expect that you have to.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Patty's restless. There are deer out now, there'll be deer out later. Okay, motion made and seconded. To approve ordinance zero seven twenty twenty three ordinance. For to uh, deal with blighted commercial properties. Uh, and, and forwarded to the city council with changes noted.
And as far as, can I, can I talk?
No, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you're gonna ask me every time if you, when you can you talk?
So, item number nine through twelve, I'm giving, I'm tasking you with the fact. Look at those and then we don't need those right away. These are for our audit purposes for.
Well, and this is.
Yes.
This is setting best practices, this is setting um, expectations, I appreciate that all of these are being addressed.
Yes.
Because otherwise we don't have.
They need some serious looking.
So, I read through all of them twice and I'm kind of there.
Yep, so, and Christina's seen, yeah, so.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna say this before, I, when you, when you were standing up here and you said. You know, I'm an auditor, you can tell me whatever you want. I have never had an auditor tell me that you can do whatever you want.
Still wizard you in jail too.
Let me tell you about my German, my German auditors. Okay, okay, fine.
Um. One, one request I have with, with the nine through twelve, just something that I think Sarah and I have all thought about. Is that tonight's the first time that we've seen like an actual, this is what we've spent so far this year. I think it would be really beneficial on a monthly basis to see what our actual expenditures are.
And I'm on my clerk treasure about that and I'm not gonna throw them under the bus, but that has to happen, yes.
I'll, I'll just talk about that a little bit more. I don't need to see every line item detail, I wanna cite, I wanna see a summary. Every single month, not just budget.
The police budget is X number and then we're here where we are. Library is here, right, and we don't need that for the library, I guess, but.
No.
Security, no, no. Total budget of a million dollars, Charlie, not a million dollars per truck.
No kidding.
I'll go up a little higher.
Okay, um, we are at our public comment. Yes, please, yes. No, just Patty had to ask if she.
Nine o'clock, you'll be the bench.
I'll be on the bench.
Okay, so I'm Fran Duncan, so I live at seven twenty three Hunter Circle. And I just have a couple of comments uh, to make and several of the agenda items. So for the arts and parks funding request, something that I hadn't heard mentioned that um, in the past personally I've been very successful with. There's any type of playground or anything with handicapped, um. Uh, to assist handicapped citizens in recreation, the Health Partners Foundation is a very. The Health Partners Foundation is a very good resource to help fund those things and we have health partners in the city. And um I think that they would um be interested in hearing more about that. Um, on the contract for the police department, I have a comment uh that ten years is a long time. And maybe we have seven officers now, but in ten years as the community grows. We're probably we may have eight officers. Also, another thing is that federal and state standards for law enforcement can change. And if those standards change as far as what is required for the officers to have bu- body cameras and other items. Is that gonna still be the same price or are they gonna come back and ask us for more money and say, hey? We didn't know this was gonna happen and this is costing our company a lot of money and we want to renegotiate this. So that's just a question that uh came to mind. Uh for the ordinance and the uh blighted property, something that came to mind for me is. Um, I think uh personally a building inspector to do this. Again, may not have the same building inspector forever. And this is a contracted position. An independent contractor, this is not a city employee. And so what type if there is liability um with um somebody on a bl- blighted property decides that they're gonna start fighting. Citations and other things and. Who's insurance is going to uh come into play with that? If that ends up uh, you know, uh in court case and legal fees and something like that. Because I don't think the building inspector is gonna want to pay for that. The city would probably be in the hook for that. And personally, um I've seen building inspectors with a very wide range of expertise in situations like this. And to get a better inspector license with the state, that's uniform. But this is something that is not uniform. And so perhaps maybe, you know, give some thought to uh an employee serving this function instead of paying. An independent contractor to do it. Um, I think that would clarify some liability issues potentially that might come in the future. Um, I have read the uh various policies and I have just a couple of comments on the purchasing agent procurement policy. And I know that you guys are just doing a read through on this. So on a certain dollar amount, even though it's in the budget. Does that mean in first of the year that the department automatically gets drawn and spent a hundred thousand dollars on dump truck? Or does the council want to think about, okay, it's in our capital improvement plan. It's in our budget. This is a lot of money. We still want to bring this forth to the council because I think the council needs to stay informed. On a lot of items like this, so they can respond to the public. Because th- these are the types of things that the public is gonna ask questions about. Um, if they're like me anyway. Um, the uh fund balance policy, I think fifty percent is way too high for that. I think forty percent is more than adequate. There's also some language in there about um. Uh, um, putting uh funding as part of a levy to levy for a fund balance. And I don't know, again, we can't predict the future. I don't know that we want to rope ourselves into that. And and limit that because you're talking about missing people's taxes to put it in a fund balance. Or kind of like a savings. And so, you know, I know the policy is an ordinance and you can depart from it. You know, hopefully a circumstances dictate, but that's something that uh came to mind for me. Um, other than that, I see that there is a new employee who's gonna be hiding in the administration department. And I was just wondering if the council had conducted an exit interview with the person who was leaving. Or not. So just a few thoughts I'm gonna throw out there. Thanks. Thanks for listening.
Sure. You've been here the whole night, yes.
Me, Professor. I'm here as president of the Lionel Richie Fan Club. As president of the community club, just to let people know that the Holiday Strip is December second. And there will be a variety of events uh throughout the day. There'll be some family events uh earlier in the day to be announced. Um, and then from two to four at Sulein Park, uh the Indian Corrus uh will be. Starting to savor, they will be traveling throughout Moon Street. Um, Santa Claus will be traveling throughout Moon Street from two to four. Um, and then Star Hounds with their Clyde Stills will be giving rides from two to four. Along with three cider. The script money that you will come turn in so that you can shop in Amory this season. Um, and then following um the Holiday Strip will be um of course. At the Cherry Tree, um like you said, uh from four to seven. And did I hear um the pastor say that there's going to be smores after lights? Awesome. Oh, at the station. Oh, at the fire department. Awesome. And then um the light up parade, of course, will start at five p.m. Um led by Santa. And then there will also be pictures with Santa at Kitty Hills um. I don't remember the time. Um, I had it when I came here at five o'clock, so forgive me for that. But so everybody comes to the Holiday Strip. I will not be there. Um, but I will be in a flight home from the Garth Brooks concert in Las Vegas. Um, but everyone else be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, um.
Stay by your mic.
Saturday after Thanksgiving, Toys for Tots at the fire station.
Thank you.
And then also this weekend, a small business Saturday, so we encourage everybody to shop local this holiday season. This weekend's the kickoff, so shop local, help pay our taxes, folks. So go shop local.
My name is Scott Carlson. I'm at two hundred Donatelli Avenue or Street, sorry. Just moved in um Thursday. Um, with the chief, uh it it what the chief gave for a presentation was really good. I'm a software engineer. I understand a lot of what they said. Um, the platform sounds great and one stop shop to get all that information. Also converting all the different types of video files. Really concerned about two things, though. One is your storage is ridiculously low. Your storage should be a lot higher and especially as time goes on, that video quality is gonna get better, that encoding is gonna change. They're gonna start charging you every single month for that overage, so I would at least double that.
Places that gave us was the two thousand.
Yeah, I'm I'm just giving you, you know, some advice there and then. What's that?
Video files get huge.
Yes, they do.
With higher resolution.
If you consider just fifteen minutes of a body cam, ten years from now, you know, how much more are you recording, right? And the other thing is ensure what you're getting for a product, because sometimes uh you get a lot of refurbished stuff. Even though they say it's brand new, um if you send a brand new camera in two months after you got it. Because it broke, they send your refurbished back, so. Okay, yeah, just confirm it, right? So that's all I got. Um, it's been informative. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so you know, our council meetings don't take this long.
That's because the mayor runs the council meeting.
Hosting new journeys in order.
Can I get in public comment yet?
Okay, go ahead.
I haven't seen any activity other than some uh specific things happening at the Three Sisters Cafe. We were told at one point that they were looking to be open by the end of the year. Um, is there anything going on in there to make that happen?
Don't know. Their kitchen's up and running. I think it's just a matter of going forward.
I heard they were looking for a chef. All the comments.
Okay, um, I had a text message from Alondra last night. Um, to just ask about hosting some special events, so they don't quite know if that's what they're trying to focus on. Um, I had dinner with her at one point. Sounds like maybe business plan will change a little bit. But um, um, if you want, I'm more than happy to uh, I didn't get back with her last night. About her um special event because I was busy doing something. So um I'm more than happy to kind of go over a different grade about that.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Mustang Valleys are supposed to be open twelve one.
Good. Are we done publicly commenting?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.